All right. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Merrimack School Board for February 5th, 2024. If you would all please join me in rising for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. Thank you very much. All right, gonna break from our typical procedures tonight as we have a public bond hearing starting off the meeting tonight. So just to give everybody an idea of how it's, the bond hearing works, I'm just gonna give a brief overview of the proposal for the bond. And then at that point, we will open it up for public comment. If you wish to speak, you can come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. And if you're a student, no need to state your address, just your name. And after that portion of the meeting, or the hearing has ended, we close the public hearing and then we can vote on the article at that point. So tonight, we are hearing a proposal for the brand-new school administrative unit central office building, which I believe we have some slides that we will be showing here in a minute. Just wanted to give some information about it. This is for a proposed 6,900,000 bond to finance, finance the construction and original equipping of a new combined superintendent's office and student services office. So, as we're getting those up and going here. Currently, the two buildings currently housing our district offices were built as three-bedroom ranch houses 50 years ago in 1963. The SAU, the School Administrative Unit, which houses our district leadership, folks sitting up here in the front of the room, otherwise known as the Green Building, was acquired in 1973. And the Special Services Building, also known as the Blue Building, was acquired in 1979. The issues with the current building, to give you a brief overview, currently building security, which is non-existent and providing no secure entrance or locked vestibule. There's a number of private sensitive material that we are required to keep confidential. And as of right now, it's, it's very difficult to do that in our buildings. Confidentiality is all but non-existent. Human Resources offices are located in the basement and are not ADA accessible and offer no confidentiality as the walls are quite thin. And any conversations you have in there will definitely be heard by the other folks in the building. Accessibility is an issue. Buildings are currently not ADA compliant. There's no elevator. There's no egress. Anybody needing access to the downstairs portion of the building has to use the stairwell. Lights, life safety issue. Currently, emergency evacuations in these buildings are not possible. Some of these buildings have basement windows as the only access point. If you are in the basement and there were to be an issue and you need to evacuate, that would be your only way out. The proposed new building is designed to serve district needs for now and into the future. This is a long-term investment. Centralized and consolidated offices for superintendent services, student services, student wellness, technology, business operations, and human resources. Currently, all of those departments are spread out across the district and multiple buildings. Greater confidentiality for public and staff for calls and meetings within the building. Divisible district and public meetings, public meeting rooms for both public and district use. The, the goal for these public meetings is to provide meeting space, not just for the Merrimack School District, but also for the town of Merrimack, which currently, this is the largest meeting room we have. It is the only one of this size. So this would provide another opportunity for organizations, groups, elected bodies to have another space to meet. Energy-efficient construction, which is currently not present in our current buildings. Secure and sufficient storage, which we are legally obligated to provide. ADA accessible, which as mentioned before, we currently do not have. Compliant, or compliant with current building codes, offering a solution to proper egress routes in case of threat or emergency evacuation. And it would have secure entrance with all school building, constant with all school buildings. So just like all of the other buildings, in order to get in, you need to be let in. After bidding this out, we landed on a proposal from Marinase Architects, which you see in front of you. It is for an 11,100-square-foot new SAU building with a 2,200-square-foot basement. It will be housed on the old red building site, if accepted. And currently, it is a, laid out in front of you here, administrative costs, 5,000, 5,995,000 for the general construction and site work. And then, looking further down the list, you can see the materials, legal bonding, engineers, all of those additional costs. And including items funded outside of project, builders' risk insurance, survey and geotechnical engineering, window blinds and signage, utility company backcharges, legal and bonding costs, commissioning mechanical and electrical systems, and building technology. The next slide, we have the current proposed layout. As you can see, the building is proposed to be in the old red building site that was demoed last year. Sitting right outside the high school, right across the street, and right next door to where the current administrative buildings are. And as you can see by the layout, all of the district leadership would be housed in one building, which would cut down on time lost from having to travel from building to building, mileage for when our administrators need to leave the building to go visit other leadership in other buildings. And another, a number of issues would, when it comes to having to get everybody in one room together, will be eliminated as everything will be housed underneath one roof. This is a bare-bones, no-frill building, as you can see. And, you know, it's, it's certainly not the Taj Mahal. It's, it's serving a purpose and providing the function that it was intended to provide. Next slide is the proposed payment schedule for the bond, if it were to be accepted. This would be replacing the middle school, which is as of now paid off, and would actually be less than the middle school. Payments that we just paid off. And so as such, this would not impact tax rate as we would slide it into the current payment schedule that we have for the middle school. And, I think that's it. So with that, we'd like to open it up to public participation to hear your feedback. We see lots of folks here tonight, which is great, to give us some information about how the community is feeling. So if you'd like to come up and speak, the microphone is open. And again, we ask that you please state your name and address for the record. And, yeah, that, that microphone, right, right behind you. Right behind you.
Hi, my name is David Rutzke at 38 Belmont Drive in Merrimack. Couple of questions. Why now? We're right now looking at a budget of almost $100 million for a school year. I think it's just a little ridiculous. And what do we need a lot of administrative rooms for at this point in the superintendent's office?
Oh, so this is public comment, so this isn't a question and answer? This is just for you to give us our feedback.
Will I be able to speak again? If I have a question? Thank you.
Hi, Marie Berry. I live at 50 Marty Drive. And while I don't disagree with the concept of building, a building to serve these purposes, I do really disagree with the scope of the project. And I have a little bit of research that I've done that I wanted to share. It seemed to me that it would be fruitful to compare us to a district nearby and see what, what they have. And so I chose Nashua because it's quite near us. The total enrollment of students in Merrimack this year, I believe, is 3,599. And Nashua is 10,215. So their district has almost three times the number of students that we do. The number of schools in the district, Merrimack has six. Nashua has 17, which is, again, nearly three times the number of schools. I looked at a picture of the Nashua SAU building on their website. And it's pretty similar in design, which implies to me that it may have been built not too long ago. But it does seem to be smaller and with less design work, I guess I would say. The number of employees in the SAU office. Looking at your plan, it looks like you're gonna be housing 25 employees in that building, with seven of them being secretaries or reception, which leaves eight, excuse me, 18 people that are holding positions of administration. And it, it was kind of occurring to me that unless a person in that position requires confidentiality, why would they require a dedicated closed-door office? Because I, I know that right now, some of those people don't have that. And if you're not in a situation of confidentiality, it seems like that wouldn't be necessary. So I was wondering if that was a consideration. It seems like Nashua has a similar number and composition of district staff or SAU district leadership staff. But their district is nearly three times the size of ours. The high school rankings in Nashua, there are two high schools, are number 12 and number 24. And so obviously, their leadership is, is doing a good job because they're maintaining rankings that actually are above ours, which ours right now is 27. So my question, well, it's not a question really, it's just a rhetorical comment. Why would we need a larger, more impressive building for our district office? That is a little more, since our district is a little more than a third the size of Nashua, why would we need something larger than what they have? I'd also note that I read the 2010 report, which is the latest one online, about the research, and, and I see that you did a lot of research about utilizing current buildings in town, utilizing space in the schools and everything. And, and I think you did a pretty good thorough job of that. But I do see in there that the recommendation at that time was a 9,000-square-foot building that didn't have an elevator. And it specifically called out the elevator as being not needed. So I'm wondering why now we're looking at a building that's 11,100 square feet and has an elevator. And you did answer the question I had about the conference room. Because I was wondering, why do they need a conference room to hold 40 people? But it seems like if it's gonna be dual-use for the public, for the, for the town as well, that, that seems like it does kind of make sense. My, my second real study was in the enrollment in Merrimack. The enrollment over the last 20 years has declined by 26%. In 2003, we had 4,870 students in the district. 2023, I believe it's 3,599, a decrease of 1271. So I'm wondering, has there been any decrease in our leadership staff at, at the district SAU level that would correspond in any way to a 26% decrease in the enrolled students? So that's, that's basically my concerns about the scope of the project. That maybe there's a way the design could be like just scaled back a bit, not be quite as fancy. That, that, that's my general comment and supporting evidence. Thank you for your attention. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jeannie Wagner for Cowan Road in Merrimack. Two questions, or not, just two comments, sorry. The building's security. When I've gone to the superintendent's office, the vestibule is always wide open and the secretaries do not get up to come. Even if I say, no, I'd, I'd like you to come to the window, they refuse to do that. So that's kind of not a really secure use of that vestibule. As far as I appreciate your research and our leadership and administration has grown and not decreased, which is, I found very interesting. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other additional public comments before we close?
Chuck Moore, 4 Depot Street. I'm very pleased to lend my full support to this project. I'm a lifelong resident. I am now, quote-unquote, retired, living on a fixed income, like many people in Merrimack. But I have stayed relevant with the needs of the community, both at the municipal level and at the school district level. I have been participating for some time now. So it's comfortable for me to say that, yes, this proposed facility is something that we desperately need. And no, it's not oversized. And no, it's not overly grand. It is well-suited to the operations that we have at hand. I've seen a great deal relative to the school district from when I attended as a student up until today. I have four grown sons who have gone through the district and all have very happy lives and a good education and a good future and good jobs. I really appreciate that people for a very long time have done more with less. And particularly in regards to this project, it was, it was brought up some 15 years ago and passed by a majority. But of course, it needed a two-thirds majority to be affirmed. And so, apparently, given all of the other difficulties in the community in those days, it was dropped, even though it was even considered to be an emergency at that time. It is certainly an emergency today. To the district's credit, we have three individuals that are here tonight who are the core, the backbone of our school district in bringing us into the 21st century. It's our superintendent, Bill Olson, our assistant superintendent for curriculum, or superintendent for curriculum, Amy Doyle, and our superintendent for finance, Matt Chevanel. They have been doing yeoman's work. COVID was a trying time for the school district. We found out what we didn't have that we should have had. The government stepped in and tried to put a bottom in the bucket, if you will. And we've all learned a great deal about what the school district needs as a result of that crisis. And so it is more important now than ever to see this project through in the affirmative. As to the details of the proposal, as I said, it is not an extravagant proposal by any means. It has a couple of characteristics that I would like to focus on. One is that there is a need for efficiency in the operation of the school administrative unit. I know I have, I've been kind of a a homeschooled carpenter most of my years. And it's pretty difficult if you don't have all of the right equipment to get the job done in the most cost-effective manner. And this building no longer suits us. I would invite anybody to take a tour of the building and see for yourselves how terribly outdated it is and how terribly insufficient it is to meet not only our contemporary desire for the comfort of employment, but for the operation itself. When we have the ability to pull in all of the disparate directors of IT and curriculum and leadership, and get them into a meeting room and get them into administrative offices, whereas now they are far-flung in off-site locations that quite frankly probably aren't much better than the SAU building we presently have. And the other is meeting space. As the school board chairman Ken Martin mentioned, this is the largest meeting room in Merrimack that's available for public use. And guess what? It's, it's the town hall, not the school district hall. It's the town hall. Meeting space is at an absolute premium in Merrimack. Whether you're on the Conservation Commission, or the Recreation Commission, or the School Budget Committee, and, and numerous other committees, we're all scrambling. So the selectmen, or I should say the councilmen are meeting here. Then the school board has to meet in the memorial conference room. And the Heritage Commission has to meet downstairs in the planning department. And they all try to get their schedules coordinated because this is a trainload full of people. And we need meeting space. And we need meeting space for the community as well. There have been many people rely upon the school district to start any number of organizations, and churches, and clubs, and nonprofits that have started at the school district in classrooms. And it would be important to provide meeting space where that kind of facilitation for continued participation to build community, we desperately need the meeting space. So in closing, I would just say that the reasons to pass this proposed bond and construction project are too numerous to even particularize. And so I stand in support of a community that is trying to move forward and the dedicated people and volunteers in our school district who will be taking us there.
Last call for public comment? All right. Then public comment is closed. So we move on to vote and discussion. Yeah, go ahead, Lori.
So first of all, I wanted to thank everyone who, who spoke this evening. And I appreciate everyone's research and, and time. Being a member of the school board, before I was on the school board, I was on the school planning and building committee. And this has been a passionate project of that committee for over 10 years. We really felt that we needed to have this building. But there was always precedent needs that came before it, and a lot of people wanted to wait for the middle school bond so it wouldn't be such, you know, pressure on the taxpayer. I can say that this building is going to be a building that's going to be able to bring our administrators into the 21st century. They'll be able to work together. They won't have to be in a basement. And, and like a lot of people said, I, I don't know if you were able to see the video of the spaces that people are working in, but it's, it's not a, a good working environment for our administrative team. As far as, since I've been on the board, we have cut administrative, one administrative position at the central office. So to say that we keep adding positions, that's not true. We have lost one position. They consolidate. We, as a school board, we cut $1 million from the budget last week because we are committed to this project and we're committed to the Mesa contract. And so we really feel that this is really important for the town of Merrimack, for education. As far as the, the size of it, I worked in Nashua, this is, this is a better building. And they don't have a central, in their central office, their conference room is very, very tiny. So this is gonna be, we're gonna be visionaries. We're gonna set a tone. And finally, I'm gonna say, you know, 52 years ago, when my dad was on the school board, he was a visionary. And his vision was for Thornton's Ferry and Reed's Ferry Schools. And at that time, people had the same concerns. And they were saying, do you need, do you need all that space? Do you need that? But, you know, now those schools are packed, they're filled. And so I think it's really important that we are visionaries and we have that perspective. So thank you.
And just to address a couple other concerns, and I know the conference room is, is a big one. And currently, in order for our admin, and our administration to come together as an administrative team, which is, how many people, again? 21 people. They have to schedule a time at the high school to meet over there in their small conference room. So there's no space to have those discussions in the SAU, especially for a large group of, of 21 people. When it comes to confidentiality, every discussion about a child is confidential legally, whether it's about what classes they're taking, discipline, education plans. Every single one of those discussions is confidential, and we have a legal obligation to keep that confidentiality to all families in our district. So confidentiality is something we take very seriously. We are also required to hold and house records for an extended period of time for our students once they've left the Merrimack School District. So we have filing cabinet upon filing cabinet currently of going back decades of student records, which once again, we are legally obligated to maintain and keep. So hence the reason for some of that space. And, oh, and just going back to administrative staff. Since in the last 25 years, the need, requirements for administrative staff has grown. Special education, which is again a legal obligation that we are required to meet by federal standards, that section of administration has grown significantly, and we are required to have director of student services, director of special services. to have director of student services, director of special services, and all of those departments, which I think if you were to look at other school districts, you will find, well, I know you will find, because again, it's a legal obligation to maintain those. So while we have cut down on some staff, we have consolidated on other staff, as well as adding the additions to that staff that we have been required to add. So with that, further discussion? Yeah.
So I also want to, first of all, thank all of you for being here tonight. Everybody up at this table has to be here. And I'm always heartened when people show up, because we're, I feel like we do important work, and I know that your time is valuable, and I appreciate that you all are here. I appreciate your thoughtful comments. I appreciate everyone who's watching online at home, who, you know, is maybe cooking dinner, has young kids, can't be here tonight. I appreciate that you're participating in the process, so I just want to start by saying that. Secondly, I think the first person that spoke asked, why now? And I think, I think the question is, why hasn't this been done before? And that is not a criticism of anybody that's come before us. It's, what it is, is it's more a statement of the building itself. As a, Merrimack School District is a, is an employer, and as employers, we have a responsibility to provide a safe and healthy work environment. And right now, we do not have that. I do not know why we don't have the fire report yet, and that's a question that I can't answer, but we don't have it. However, what we know is a, a large majority of our administrative staff work in a basement where there is no egress, meaning there is no way for them to get out if there's a fire or some other issue. They can't escape the building. There's mold, there's, in one, in the special services building, if you watch the video, the mold is terrible. We had, it's not ADA compliant. That is not acceptable as an employer to have a building that's not ADA compliant. We had a person come in for an interview, and they were not able to get into the superintendent's office to have their interview. That is something that we, as a board, are responsible for, because we are employers, you know, we, we act as the employer, you know, employers for the district. But as, as a community, to ask our administrators to do this work in an unsafe and unhealthy environment, I've actually lost sleep over this over the last two weeks, because I don't understand why it hasn't been taken care of before now, because the issue has been there before now. I, I do understand we were waiting for the bond, and, and, and the people before us made the decisions they made for the reasons they made them. I'm not criticizing them. But this decision is ours now, and I can't not know what I know. And I, and we have to do something, and we have to make a safe environment. And we're trying to do the best we can by our employees, bringing them together in one facility that is safe, that is modern, that isn't flashy, but it meets the needs, will probably outgrow quickly. If we push it down the line further, like people have done up to this point, it's just going to cost more and more and more and more and more. And I think if we do it now, and we've, we've, we've done the work of trying to make the budget and everything works, that we can do this now that the bond from the middle school is being retired. I would ask people to consider how important it is to make sure that the employees in the Merrimack School District are safe and in a healthy environment. I definitely want them together. I definitely want a building that, that makes sense. Every school district has an SAU building, right? So we should have an SAU building. But we have, it has to be safe. And I, I don't know how much longer we can actually get away with what doesn't feel at all safe to. It doesn't, not that it feels safe, it just objectively is not safe. And so I think that's, for me, why now?
Go ahead, Lori.
Again, thank you for coming. I remember the first time I came to a board meeting and spoke out. It was, I was very nervous and thinking about, you know, what it was like to be here. So I thank you all for coming and listening, and, and those of you who spoke. I want to address a couple of questions that I have heard from the public, as well as things that we have been discussing on the board. The question about can we just lease property? Can we just go out and get a piece of property like the Rite Aid building up the road? The problem is, is commercial leases put all of the cost expenses on the tenant. Unlike if I own a house and I rent it out, I, as the property owner, am required for repairs, to replace appliances, those kinds of things. In a commercial lease, the tenant is responsible for all of those things, which significantly drives up the cost on a piece of property we don't own, which in turn, at the end of that lease, could get kicked out of. So that's, the expense of renting commercial property exceeds what the bond would be over time, in addition to that we would own the property and all the other benefits that we've already discussed. So that, that's the first thing. The second thing is that the original, some of the original ideas in 2010 were things such as modular buildings, a steel building, those kinds of suggestions to reduce cost. We ask those same questions as well, and the research shows that you can use modulators, they deteriorate, deteriorate over time, and you end up spending more money to replace them in 20 years than we would be doing the bond. This is a permanent structure that is going to have low maintenance for a significant period of time, and even the maintenance over the long time would be less than continuing every 20 years to replace modulators. So those are a couple of questions I know the public has been asking, and I've been listening to those questions, and so I wanted to make sure we address those tonight. I know at this time, we're thinking, oh, if we retire the middle school bond, we can be done with it. And I know some people don't find comfort in that, and I understand that. But the purpose of making that statement is not simply that we want to spend the money, because first of all, it's less than the middle school. But it's simply to point out that it's not new dollars out of taxpayer pockets. One of the reasons we voted last week to cut a million dollars off the budget is to get it down on the discretionary side as low or as level funded as we can. We can't help that insurance costs went up 15.9%. That is a legal obligation that we have. We can't help some of the increases in the budget because they're driven by those contractual obligations and the law. But we can cut down discretionary spending, and that's what we've been working on, so that the budget is below inflation and as level funded as we can in the discretionary spending. That makes it a little bit more palatable to say, we want to extend another bond that's not new money out of our pocket for the next 15 years. I understand the scope as well, the, the, the question about why 11,000 over 9,000 elevator over no elevator, that didn't include a basement that we have to have now because of storage records and the amount of technology that we have to maintain. In 2010, we did not have the servers and technology pieces as large and as extensive as we now have to have in the district. Because as we all know, in 14 years, technology has dramatically increased, and technology use in schools has skyrocketed since 2020. So that's a portion of that that's included in the floor plan as well, so I wanted to address that. Again, thank you so much for being here. It's wonderful to see faces out there tonight.
Go ahead, Naomi.
I don't have anything to add to the discussion, because you guys all covered basically every point that I was gonna make, but I just wanted to also thank everyone for being here.
All right, so we'll move it to a vote. Do we have a motion to accept the bond article as presented? We have a motion, we have a second? Lori? Discussion?
I did think of something I wanted to say. One of the things I've seen out in the community is that we can just decide to do this, and it's gonna happen without voter input. And that's not true. What we're voting on right now is that this is going to be on the ballot in April. So everybody has a choice of, of whether they want to support this project or not. We absolutely hope that you've heard enough tonight that we'll encourage you to support it. But this is not something that we're unilaterally deciding without the input of the community. The community is the final decision maker here.
Good point, Naomi. All those in favor? Bond proposal passes 500. And I believe that closes the bond hearing, am I correct? Thank you, Matt. All right, then we move on to our primary agenda tonight, which is our public meeting. So we do have another round of public participation to address agenda items tonight. So if you'd like to speak, addressing the agenda items, we welcome you to come on up. Once again, state your name for the record. And if you're a student, no need to state your address, just your name. So the microphone is open? Seeing none, we will move on to informational updates, starting with superintendent update.
Yes, thank you, and excuse me for wearing a mask tonight. I'm just on the tail end of my first adventure with COVID, so I apologize. We have prepared for the public, for you and for the various boards and committees, a frequently asked questions document, which tried to ask objective questions pertaining to the construction of a new central office with factual answers to it. You know, the worst thing we could do is engage in, in emotional hyperbole and try to present all sorts of information that scares the public. That's not what this is all about, and no one believes that information. So we've placed before you some questions and some factual answers to provide you, the budget committee, the building committee, and the public with factual information. You know, the greatest enemy of a, of a democracy is, in a town meeting form of government, deliberate obsession, is inaccurate or false information. So we've tried to be as accurate as we, we possibly can, let everyone make up their own mind. Getting to some school news also, we are preparing the school calendar for the 24-25 school year. We've had a, we had a very good meeting. It is in the process of review right now. We will be doing a survey sometime this week of the parents and also our school staff, similar to what we have done in the past. We'll present those results to you when we present our recommended school calendar. As I've said in the past, there are lots and lots of considerations that go in to developing a school calendar. We don't just take calendar from this year and just carry it over, just change the dates next year. We look at professional development. We look at graduation dates, which are regulated by statute. We try, and we have, we've done an excellent job in aligning our calendar with the Career Technical Education Center, particularly at Alveron, where we try to make sure that all our days, all our vacations throughout the year align with them, so that our students are not missing valuable vocational instructional opportunities at those centers. So we look forward to presenting that to you. I'm not sure if it'll be the next meeting or two meetings from now, but it's, it's coming shortly. With great pride, again, the Merrimack High School Grand State Challenge Team is in the thick of, of competition. First episode of the 42nd season of the Grand State Challenge airs this Thursday night, February 8th at 7:30 PM. Merrimack takes on Belmont to see which team will advance to the quarterfinals. And only, I think it's the top 13 or 14 teams across the state continue to advance even to this point. So that bodes well for the Merrimack team, and I have to thank Sarah Campbell and Sally Eggle, who work with the, with the challenge team. They have done a superb job, because our team is among one of the best prepared among all school districts in the state. Want to congratulate two students who were recognized by the New Hampshire Scholastic Art Awards. Cameron Damaris won five silver key awards and two gold key awards for his work in photography, and Vanessa Carlson was awarded three honorable mentions for her photography work. They are among the very best students recognized in the, in the entire state. Sophomores, Daniel Korotchenko and Lily Dahlback Joyal will represent Merrimack High School in the New Hampshire Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership Conference. And that's a national organization with a mission to inspire and develop a global community of youth and volunteers dedicated to leadership, service, and innovation. Our staff and our students constantly make us proud in terms of what they are able to accomplish during the course of the year. Some further news, more than a dozen Merrimack High School students with an interest in law, policing, forensics, and community service began their first Merrimack Police Department Teen Academy about a week and a half, two weeks ago. Run for eight weeks, and we hope to offer it regularly. This is through Holly Hall, Director of Alternative Pathways. Hoping to offer it regularly, students will not only get a peak at several aspects of careers in public service field, they are earning Merrimack High School elective credit as well. In terms of sports, indoor track and field, state meet is this Sunday, from the state. Swimming competition, eight swimmers will be attending the state competition. Five are qualified, three are supporting relay swimmers. We congratulate them. Wrestling, Wednesday night is senior night, February 7th, that's upcoming. Gymnastics, once again, Mia LeBlanc, who was recently finished, excuse me, recently featured in a Hometown Hero segment on WMUR. Mia is hoping to be able to qualify for the US National Gymnastics Team. She's an expert at balance beam, floor exercises, high bar, numerous other gymnastics events. Just an extraordinary athlete with tremendous, tremendous potential in the future. So she's ranked number one in the state, and we do want to mention that. And she will be in the state meet this week, and we wish her well. Bowling, as you know, we have a superb bowling team, absolutely outstanding. Last home match of the season is Saturday, this Saturday, the 10th, at Merrimack Ten Pin, Boys Basketball Senior Night is this Friday. This is an action-packed week, and we love every minute of it. Girls Basketball Senior Night was on February 2nd. Hockey Senior Night is this Saturday, February 10th. Alpine Skiing Senior Night on the 9th. Girls State Meet on the 12th, and the Boys State Meet on the 13th. Mentioned the Grand, the Grand State Challenge. I want to mention that six students will be performing in the New Hampshire Music Educators Association Jazz All-State Festival. The Honors Jazz Band, Trey Grant, playing the trumpet, Hikari McDowell on the alto sax, with the Honors Jazz Choir, Julia Holdston, soprano, and Jazz Choir, Adelina Cameron, alto, Shailin Sasha, soprano, and Rachel Yasevich, soprano, all extraordinarily talented students. Ten students from the Merrimack Middle School have been selected to perform in the chorus and band of the New Hampshire Music Educators Association South Central District Middle School Music Festival in May. Tucker Landry on bassoon, Nora Campbell on clarinet, Jacinda Reisman on flute, Ella Duval on flute, Parker Chevall on horn, Boden Walters, tenor sax, Lauren Brodsky trumpet, Hunter Gladding trumpet, Justine Swisher soprano voice, and Sadie Taylor soprano voice, and somewhere, can I think in there, some future members of Tower of Power. So between the saxophone and the trumpets. And the Merrimack High School French language students recently enjoyed a four-day culture and language immersion trip to Quebec City. They learned curling, reenacted historical battle between French and English soldiers on the plains of Abraham, drove dog, dog sleds, had a wonderful, wonderful experience. And I want to mention also that this week is National School Counselor Week, from February 5th through the 9th, and so we thank our counselors who show up day in and day out, deal with lots of complex issues, help students in every way imaginable, and we want them to know how much we all appreciate them. And that is it for tonight.
Thank you, Bill. And I'll just add, the Jazz All-State Concert is this Saturday at Pinkerton at 1 o'clock, and I will be there. It's gonna be fantastic. Moving on, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum update.
Good evening, everyone. I have one update. The New Hampshire statewide assessment window for access testing has opened as of 2/1. This assessment, or the Alternative Access Assessment, is required for all of our English language learners. You may have heard of this assessment, it's often called the WIDA, and it assesses reading, writing, listening, and speaking. And it's a comprehensive tool that helps to inform our teaching and learning and instruction for, for our multilingual students. Each of our three ESOL teachers have to assess every single student on their caseload that they service, as well as those students that have opted out. So it's a really busy time for the ESOL students and their, and their teachers, and I just want the families to know that those results will be sent directly home to parents and families. to parents and families, but they should certainly reach out to the ESOL teacher if they have questions.
Thank you, Amy. Assistant Superintendent for Business Update.
Yeah, thank you. Well, since I saw you last, it's been kind of an uneventful week, but we've been busy with budget and getting ready for tonight and everything like that. What I will do is, I have reports that were done a number of years ago as far as the air quality goes in the SAU office and the Special Services Office. There were situations where we did have mold in the basement, especially in the Special Services Offices, but it was remediated at the time, and it's something we have to be mindful at and always looking forward, looking forward, looking out for in both the basement of the SAU and the Special Services Building. So it's an ongoing, it's an ongoing issue, so we just have to be mindful of it to make sure it doesn't come back or get worse than it was. So I just want to put those out there. They were done by RPF, our remediation company, and air quality testing company, water quality testing, and asbestos testing company. And so we might as well just publish those as a whole, so everybody can read them. They're probably around 20 pages long, each of them. There's a lot of stuff in there that I don't understand, but in the end, you'll get an idea of what we were looking at and where we are right now. We're also waiting, still waiting for the Fire Marshal Report. I know Bill has a call into the chief. You know, Merrimack Fire Department is an excellent department. They do a wonderful job, and we would just like to get this piece of paper so we could take a look at it and publish it on the website also, so everything's kind of transparent. So that's what we're waiting for right now. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Matt. Moving on to School Board update, just a few things. We have our mediation meeting with our ongoing Mesa negotiations happening next week, so we should hopefully have a positive outcome after that discussion. And that was the only update I have, unless there's one I'm missing. Any other board members think of any? Nope. All right. And that brings us to old business.
Can I just say something?
Oh, sorry.
Since we don't have a student representative, can I just highlight something?
Yeah.
Just for parents that are watching, I read this in the newsletter that went out, but in case anybody didn't see it, CTE presentations for sophomores are going to be happening. I know, I think Alveron's already passed, but Tuesday, February 13th, Nashua North and South. As a parent of three, well, one's graduated, but high school students that have gone through the high school three, I really didn't know much about CTE until I had one of my kids ask about it. And then we did go and take the tour, and what we saw was very impressive. And you know, we now have a kid who's doing CTE, and it has been a great experience. So if you are a parent or a student that has not explored that option, it is worth exploring. There are some really cool options that I had no idea existed before I really stopped to look, because one of my kids said, "Stop to look." So just throwing that out there, that would be the kind of thing that the student representative might typically say. If you want more information, you can contact the Merrimack High School Counseling Office.
Thanks, Jenna. Okay, now moving on to old business and the 24-25 Budget Update. And if you watched last week, we had had a pretty lengthy discussion about the budget, going over our priorities of the SAU building and the Mesa contract. And we had charged our administration with the task of finding ways to cut $1 million from the current proposed budget to bring it down to be more level funded. And so we are here tonight to look at those proposed changes. And you want me to go through them, or?
If you don't mind, I'll review them. First of all, this is always a difficult task. Because when you have a budget that is comprised of primarily 82% to 84% of salaries, and you are asked to reduce the appropriation request by $1 million, it's impossible, basically, to not look at different programs and positions. And so I guess my word to everyone with whom we've had to have some challenging conversations in terms of emotion, in terms of pride that people have in their positions, they're always, it's always difficult. There is nothing personal about it at all. We're looking at trying to look at our priorities to the greatest extent possible. In terms of, is a program a core content program? What do the number of actual instructional contact hours look like between a person and children? And a whole number of issues. We don't throw dots at a dartboard. We look very, very carefully at what we're trying to accomplish, how we're trying to accomplish it, and what we might be able to do without, and what children might be able to do without. And we present this to you with the understanding that there are five of you who may have five different opinions about what I've presented to you, and that's okay. This is nothing to be taken personally. This is a job that we all bring our hearts and souls to and try to make the right decisions, and sometimes we differ in our perspective. And so the first reduction, I'm going to go through Matt's spreadsheet. There are a number of equipment, repairs, non-instructional equipment that we have level funded. These are kind of the easier ones, because we live without sacrifice easier than others. You know, Amy has spent a considerable amount of time in her desire to bring an outstanding, comprehensive literacy program to the elementary grades of wit and wisdom. And we have decided to use the reserve funds that by statute we are allowed to carry for that, to offset the cost of that for the upcoming year. We're reducing certain accounts that you see in terms of mentors, curriculum instruction assessment, and professional development. You know, we're going to try and offer some things this year that will pertain to next year, but we think, given the choice between reducing some of these and reducing more personnel, we'd rather reduce in these areas. And you know, look, Matt, and if Matt and Amy want to make any comment as we go along, they're certainly welcome to do that. So that brings us, you know, to the personnel. And we've looked at all of our offerings. What I'm going to recommend to you is that we restructure the World Language Program at the upper elementary school. We presently offer both Spanish and French. Across the district, our numbers in French are declining somewhat. Certainly, the numbers in Spanish are remaining relatively strong. This is one of those difficult decisions. What we will replace the current structure with is one individual who is presently in a Spanish position, who will be providing exploratory instruction to grades five and six, both five and six, along with some Spanish cultural lessons, if you want instruction. And we think it can work, and we think it can work well. So that's a difficult one, but we have chosen to make that change. With respect to the high school, our enrollment numbers at the high school have been declining, although they will begin over the next three to five years to begin to stabilize somewhat, because we are seeing relatively strong enrollments emerging again at the elementary school, and those enrollments obviously will work their way up through the upper elementary into the middle school, and eventually into the high school. But at this point in time, we feel we can reduce a staff position. We'd like a little bit more time to be able to be a little bit more precise in terms of where that position will be. I know that makes some staff probably a little bit anxious, and we understand that. We totally understand that. But we feel confident that we can make that reduction with no negative impact on the quality of services. That would still allow us to provide core areas of instruction with people-teacher ratios of about 18, 19, or 20 to 1, which at the high school level is very good. Okay? We have talked also with Principal Rowe at the upper elementary school. She had requested both an SEL specialist and a reading interventionist. She has expressed quite clearly to us that some of the student complexities that are being presented and are increasing across the district, that the SEL position is extraordinarily important right now, and she prioritizes that over the reading interventionist position. Another difficult decision is to discontinue, maybe restructure, the gifted and talented program at the middle and high school level. We have a gifted and talented program at the elementary level also that is more direct instructional contact in nature than the middle and high school. That's not to say anything negative about what's going on at the middle and high school. However, what I'm looking at in terms of reductions is how much contact time and how much instruction is there during the full day with students? And I see that more at the elementary level than at the middle and high school level. We will hopefully be able to work with the staff at the high school through the department heads, which is easier said than done in terms of bringing more differentiation to the classroom at the upper grade levels. You know, we talk about that. We've talked about that for 30 or 40 years in terms of differentiation. It's incumbent upon us to provide professional development in that regard. So we think that, yes, does that diminish something at the middle and high school level? It does, but I think strategically, I think it's more important that we offer that at the elementary level, which is, as you know, a much more developmental time in children's lives. We're going to restructure the middle school SEL component, and that has an impact on the high school in-school suspension program. We have a dean of students that we hired. I want to thank you for supporting the change in that position from a behavioral specialist to a dean. We've had an excellent person who has made a real difference. One of the conversations we've had with the middle school administration is the amount of time that they have had freed up to deal with important tasks in running the school has been extraordinary with this person in place. So sometimes, you know, you have to spend a little bit of money for a big payoff down the road in terms of job performance and the ability of others to do their job more effectively also. So just that change, this year, this current budget that you allowed us to do from a behavioral specialist to a dean, has paid great dividends in terms of working with students. That has allowed us, and will allow us, to take the person who is in an SEL position at the middle school and move that person to the high school to provide a more restorative type of program in the in-school suspension room. Okay? We'd like that. We had a good meeting with the individual this morning. We've met with all individuals over the last several days who have been impacted and will be impacted, if this is the route you choose to take. We met with the SEL person this morning, and we came away from that meeting quite enthused about what the in-school suspension program at the high school can potentially look like down the road with a lot of work, a lot of training, a lot of discussion with colleagues in other districts and around the New England area. But we want to make it a more restorative program in nature, not just a place of punishment, but a place where we try to understand what's going on in each student's life that is creating some dysregulation in that student in some way, shape, or form, because that's the real key. Behavior is an outward manifestation of something else that's going on in that child's life, and it's important for us to understand that, okay, and not just treat the symptom of it. So those are the reductions. Some of them are relatively easy with respect to non-personnel in nature, materials, supplies, repair services, using reserve funds, very importantly and very strategically for the literacy program, the comprehensive program that Amy is bringing in collaboration with the staff to the school district. It's, you know, it's the personnel ones that are difficult. But no matter what we do, no matter what we do, it involves a person, it involves some services to children. It's a question of looking as carefully and concisely as we can at priorities. And with that, I'll stop talking, and we'll be glad, between Amy, myself, and Matt, we'll be glad to answer any of your questions.
Open it up.
I want to say thank you. I can tell that you did a very careful, precise search through the budget. And I appreciate how hard that work is, and we gave you that challenge, and you exceeded the challenge. So I appreciate that very much. One of the things that, when I first ran for Budget Committee, I had noticed at that time was that we hadn't been addressing personnel issues, and whether we had everyone in the right place, what programs we were doing. And I think that time is now, and I appreciate the work that you have done here. I absolutely support using those reserve funds for wit and wisdom. As I said last week, I support the program, and I just want to reiterate, to change reading scores, we need to get back to the science of reading, and these curriculum purchases are getting us back to the science of reading, which will improve our reading scores. Same with the changes that we've made in math curriculum as well. And I think that is a brilliant use of those funds. So I, again, appreciate the things that you have put in here, the difficult conversations that you have had. Attrition of students in a program is very difficult, because we have wonderful staff. And so I appreciate that that is difficult. The gifted and talented program, I understand the difficulty of that as well. As a kid who came up through gifted and talented, I see the benefits of it. But as a teacher in the secondary, I see so much more benefit to differentiating all across the board for my gifted and talented students all the way across. So I think that is, that professional development and moving in that direction for the secondary levels is an excellent use of resources.
Go ahead, Jenna.
I agree with Lori. I have to say, I pulled this out, and I think I just expected something very different. I didn't, I think I expected you to look at the budget with new stuff you presented us and cut some of that stuff out. I think that's what I expected to happen. And so to see that you went and you said, "What can we do?" Looking at everything on the table and made really thoughtful decisions, albeit extremely difficult ones, was surprising, but also, I thought, really meaningful. So I appreciate that you did that. I know that, you know, some people have already reached out about the decision about French at JMU's. There are some people who don't know this information, so I'm just going to say this information, just to say what this means. So in our fifth and sixth grade school, JMU's, we have Spanish and French exploratory. So essentially, kids go, they get exposed to French and Spanish that allows them to make an informed decision when they get to the middle school. How that works, because I have a student at JMU's right now, and I remember I asked this question at the beginning of the year, because, you know, my daughter had French at the beginning of the year. She went through, 14, I think it was 14, might be 13, but 14 or 13 days later, she said, "I'm all done French for the year." And I was like, "No, you're not. You're going back to French." She's like, "No, I'm not," and I'm like, "Yes, you are." And she was like, "No, I'm not." And I was like, "Okay, I'll ask. You're wrong. I'll ask." Well, she was right. She didn't go back. She isn't going back. So how this works is they have trimesters. So there are three trimesters over, so in fifth grade, you get three trimesters, three trimesters in sixth grade, six trimesters total. That means that, so to fit in French, she has one trimester of French this year, which is 14 days, and two next year, which for a total of 39 to 42, 45-minute periods. So when people are saying that you're cutting French, it would be, they're not getting French every day. It's not a daily rotation. It is a 14-day, in the case of, you know, any particular child. It could be this year, just 14 days, the whole year, and that's something that they're then going to go back and revisit. Now, I'm not saying that's not valuable, but I'm saying that's what's being cut. It's not a daily experience where the kids are walking out the end of sixth grade, speaking French. They know, you know, they know the days of the week, they know French culture, and our French teacher is phenomenal. And it is, like I appreciate what you said, it's not a personal decision, but I think sometimes... But I think sometimes when people hear cutting French, you know, because of the declining enrollment and because of the fact that in, we're really, you know, yeah, I guess I could pull them out of my calculator and do the math, 39 to 42, 45-minute periods across two years does not mean kids are learning to speak French. It just means they're learning to understand whether they like French enough to choose it in middle school or going forward. Very difficult decision, but I just wanted to sort of explain that to people that really, you know, may not understand. We got an email saying, you know, why are you cutting French at the middle school? We are not cutting French at the middle school. French will still be offered at the middle school. This is just an exploratory program, and this is something that, you know, I didn't expect to see, but I'm just trying to explain for context for people who might have specific questions.
Go ahead, Lori.
So earlier this week, I was in Shaw shopping, and I got to see our business administrator at the pharmacy. So I asked him if he was getting high blood pressure medication after our last meeting. And, but, you know, when we had our goals meeting in June, the school board and the administration came together, and we talked about our priorities. And we really clearly came out of that meeting with two priorities. And one was the central office, and one was the Mesa contract. And so we knew that there was going to come a time where we were going to have to make some really hard decisions, and we made some really hard decisions. I, like Jenna, thought maybe we were going to look at some of the things that we put in the budget. And I just hope maybe at some day we can have a further discussion. There is a couple areas, like I did not support the police details for the upper elementary schools. And I also, the electronic pass for the middle school, I didn't know if we could wait on that until we had more research on that. Because for me, I think that when a teacher is engaging the students in the classroom and then someone wants to come up and do an electric pass, I don't know if that's going to take away from some of that engagement. So those are things that I'd like to maybe talk about. But I think our administrators did a fabulous job. I know when I look at this, some of it makes me feel not really good because there are all things that we really, as, you know, community members and as former, you know, teachers, that we want. But we have to have priorities, and I think that's what we did. So thank you.
Yeah. And, you know, one of the things that came up earlier tonight, talking about enrollment. And enrollment, as we know, we're seeing a trend starting now where we might have a stabilization of our enrollment numbers. But it has gone down for the last few years, and we've added several positions, several needed positions in the last few years. So it's at a certain point, we have to take a look at our staffing and decide, you know, where attrition can, where we can apply that. So again, this is something when I signed up for this or when I ran for this position, this was something I would never really look forward to have this conversation. This is not something I ever want to discuss. As a teacher myself, I know it's something that we're always thinking about. Being a music educator, this is always very much on my mind. So I understand how challenging it can be to have these conversations. So I really do appreciate the work that went into it and the research that went into it. And I like to look at these not so much as, you know, a cut or an ending, but more of a restructuring opportunity, kind of taking a look at what currently we have and where can we change or make room for programs to grow and to flourish and maybe even improve upon. So I like the word restructuring simply because now we can kind of, we have a little bit of room to play with, I guess, would be one way to think of it. So, and I'll just go ahead, I'll agree with Lori. There were a couple of things that were presented this year that I also, you know, the police detail at J-Muse was a little high. You know, I'm, again, I'm a music educator. I put on about 10 to 12 performances a year. We have an 800-seat auditorium at my school, and it's pretty full. And I've never had a police officer there for any of those events. So I understand for crowd control and, you know, we have some pretty tiny parking lots and things like that. I think every school has put in for a little bit. I just noticed that that number was quite high. And so that was one I wanted to take a look at. And then I agree too, the electronic hall pass thing, I think, is a really great idea. And I think the information we can pull from it can be really beneficial. I just wonder if now is the right time to have something like that. At least the way it was described to me, it seems that the data that comes from that is really what's the good stuff. Like, that's the stuff we want, is like time out of class and things like that. And I think that's good. Again, I just think, looking at all the priorities that we have and the budget restrictions we're currently faced with, I just wonder if now is the time. That's all. I would love to see it down the road, for sure. So that was kind of where I was at with that.
My turn. Um, I'm going to ask questions. One of the things, I used to watch these meetings before I was on the board, and one of the things I noticed as a member of the public was, like, everybody just, like, makes speeches, and then they don't talk to each other. And I've tried to change that some. To that end, if all of us think that E-Hall Pass is not the right time, we can absolutely decide not to do that tonight. Because that was on my list as well of things like, yeah, this was a nice-to-have, but I think we're doing without a lot of nice-to-haves this year. The other thing is, I'm trying to think of how to phrase my questions. The teacher at J-Muse, the French program, I really appreciated Jenna, the way you illustrated what the program is like at J-Muse because that was, I had a child go through J-Muse very recently as well, and he did Spanish, not French. And I also noticed, I was like expecting, like, Spanish class. And I'm not knocking the exposure he got because it was great that he had any. But, you know, he came back knowing how to say hi, how are you, and count to 10. And it wasn't like a whole year of Spanish. Anyway, so my question about that was, shoot. So with the removing of French and only doing Spanish, is there, how does that affect the Spanish teacher's schedule? Is it too much for them? Like, how is that all going to work?
No, it will impact the Spanish teacher's schedule in that that teacher will have a more complete schedule than currently exists. And so that's why we could share that person for next year between both fifth grade and sixth grade.
So what I'm getting is that the French and teacher and the Spanish teacher at J-Muse were not, did not have a full schedule?
With the nature of the program, I would have to say to you honestly, it was, that's one of the things I looked at, okay? In terms of that and other areas of the budget, how complete, how full was the schedule in terms of contact with students and the nature of instruction? Please understand that in no way, shape, or form diminishes the importance of those two teachers, and you know that. It's just, there's where you look at it and you say, okay, what, where do I need to put my eggs in the basket here? Is it in French and Spanish, or is it someplace else? And something, something had to be changed.
And I think that speaks to the, people have been talking for ages about the declining enrollments in town. And with declining enrollments, like, how do you manage that? How do you manage when you have classes that aren't full? And I think it's really important that we're having these hard conversations. Do you know off the top of your head, like, what the split was? Was it like 25% of kids wanting French and 75% of kids wanting Spanish, or?
Do you mean at the middle school?
No, at J-Muse.
So J-Muse, all students get Spanish and French. It's not an option. And then when they get to the middle school, they can choose between Spanish and French.
That was something I didn't understand. Thank you.
They're part of the UA rotation.
Okay. That's what you meant by the trimesters.
So that you just, it just falls where it falls.
Right.
And I was just going to say, and if you remember at the goals meeting, one of the things I think we talked about with world language was, even at the college level, a lot of schools are going to V-Lax, which is online learning program. So any high school student can take any world language that they want. And it's a certified class, high school class that could transfer right back to their transcript.
The other one that, when I first read this, like, was like, oh, my God, are we doing this? Was the gifted and talented at the high school level. And I was hoping we could explain a little bit more. Basically, I want to reassure people that this doesn't mean we're just, like, getting rid of gifted and talented, that people understand what you meant by differentiated education and want to reassure people that we're going to work towards excellence always and more opportunities for high-achieving students always.
Maybe I should let Mr. Olson speak first. All I was just going to say is, as a high school, as the parent of three high school students, there is differentiated instruction built into the schedule because you have, you know, the foundational college prep level, and then they have the option to take honors, AP, and/or dual enrollment. So, you know, I have, my own kids have taken honors where they need the challenge, AP where they need the challenge, and dual enrollment where they need the challenge, and then able to take the regular college prep level classes where they, you know, in the subjects that really the challenge would have been too much or whatever. So differentiation is built into a high school schedule in general. So that helps. And a little bit at the middle school as well, because at the middle school, based on, when you're coming out of sixth grade, they test the students, and then you get placed in, you could get placed in like an advanced math track where you start pre-algebra right in seventh grade and then algebra, you know, because you have a student there, right? So that starts that differentiation. I don't know how that works differentiation-wise with, say, reading, language arts, or, you know, history, or any of those things at the middle school. But at the high school, it's built in by its basic challenge.
And I would add that even when you're, as a teacher, whether you're teaching honors or AP, you are also making differentiation within those courses. I know that I teach dual credit macroeconomics, which is in conjunction with NHTI. And even within that group of high-achieving students, I differentiate that instruction. So it's both the schedule, course selection, and what happens in the classroom.
Can I just say one more thing, Lori? Just to finish my comments. It actually, when you just said that, it brings me back to when we're thinking about how to provide the most challenge. What I'd like to see happen is Merrimack High Schools expand our dual enrollment options because right now they're sparse, they're few and far between. And I think that's an area where we can grow to start challenging people. And I think it is, I think the whole idea of gifted and talented is an outdated model in a sense, at the high school level. In a sense, it's kids should be able to challenge themselves in the subjects that they can challenge themselves in, and that's worked really well. I've just seen, you know, anecdotally with my own children, but with other children as well, students, I shouldn't say children, they're not children. But I just think that moving towards sort of getting, helping our teachers gain the ability to teach dual enrollment and expanding that is a great way to add value at our high school in a different way.
So just two things. So I saw recently that Mackenzie Murphy with Nashville Community College was with our guidance department just on that whole thing, getting kids enrolled in the community college. So when we talk about dual enrollment, it's you're going to high school and college at the same time. And I think that's wonderful. And then finally, I think that for us, like, we have that new positions, the pathway to graduation. And I think that's going to be, as that position grows, is going to be where our gifted and talented start to flourish because we're going to start finding out what students are really passionate about. And then we're going to be able to put them in programs that are going to give them those learning opportunities. So I just think, again, the administration looked at that and said, how can we still give these students these opportunities with the people that we have? So I appreciate that.
May I just say, I appreciate the fact that you mentioned the guidance department. There is much more engagement right now between our guidance department and Nashville Community College. One of the things I'd like to do, and now this is not necessarily a substitute for gifted and talented, but I did my master's degree at Babson College, which has historically been rated as the number-one college in the country for entrepreneurship. And I know the chief operating officer very well there. She happens to be the chair of the Massachusetts Board of Education. And I'm interested in talking with Amy to see if we can meet with Katherine Krasinski and work with, involve Holly, and see if we can have some kind of partnership with Babson to offer our students some ELOs that deal directly with innovation and entrepreneurship. There was, we used to, in my former district, we were one of a few districts in Massachusetts who became involved in the Babson Boston Challenge. Our students were recognized for some of the most innovative projects in those. And there's no reason why we can't have that same type of opportunity here in Merrimack. So we will pursue that. And, you know, there are a couple of different approaches over the years, over the last 20, 30, 40 years in terms of gifted and talented. It is a pull-out program. Or do you work to integrate that into every, you know, every course in some way, shape, or form, which involves considerable amount of professional development and staff buy-in? But I think that's the right way to go, particularly at the upper grade level. Because every student, every student has some ability to respond to a challenge that meets their passion, and that's what we want to try and pursue.
So if I can, can we circle back, since we seem to have a consensus here, on the police detail and the school pass system and those line numbers?
Definitely.
Well, I just want to say, I hope we don't ex-nay the police detail completely because I understand what you're saying about the Performing Arts Center. But when everybody's in and sitting down, it's a little bit of a different situation than people coming and going. In the events that happen at J-Muse, they're very fluid. People all over the building, people in all over the place, traffic, definitely the traffic situation, but also the fact that, and this really is built out of the fact that, I think, we talked about this. One of the, was the art show or the fall, something in the fall. It happened like two days after a national school shooting event. And parents were uneasy because we're going into this building, and there's anybody and their brother can show up. And, you know, it was good to know that there'll be some police detail there. I don't know, you know, exactly, I'd have to go back and open the budget. I don't know if it was outlined specifically, like, this many officers or whatever. I mean, I just, I'm hoping that we don't cut it completely.
That certainly wasn't what I was planning on. Well, they budgeted this year $800 for police detail, and they proposed $4,500 for next year, which tells me they're planning on hiring police for everything, probably multiple police, which I do think sets sort of a weird precedent for all our events, you know? Like, every single event that we, you know, the Merrimack, the cavalcade of bands is coming up. They don't have police officers there, and that's a full gym. So I certainly wasn't planning, no, I think there are moments where police detail is important. I was looking more at being in line with the other elementary schools, kind of keeping it around that same number, unless there's something I don't know that maybe admin can fill me in on.
And during the budget presentations, you know, one of the questions that I did ask is because that school is open. And in a lot of schools, we have those, you know, fences that you can fence off parts of the building so that people aren't just going all over. And so looking, have Matt, like, I know he's done so much this year with school safety and assessing, but is there ways that we can, you know, close off parts of the building? You know, when Reed's Ferry was asking for a police detail, this is, you know, two or three years ago, I was like, why do you need a police detail for, it was their art night? Well, then I went to the art night, and they needed it for directing traffic because the traffic was so, it was outrageous. And I said, okay, now I understand why this one event would need that. But, you know, we, you know, I understand what Jenna just said about, you know, school shootings, et cetera, but we can't, we can't live in fear like that because we cannot sustain having police details at every school event that has 200 kids or more at, or parents. It just, we wouldn't be able to afford it. It's $75 an hour for a minimum of four hours. We don't even have the police that would be able to do it because we have a police shortage right now, so.
And I just want to say, it's not about living in fear. It's about being prepared when you have a fluid situation. Again, cavalcade of bands, different situation, everybody's in and sitting down. It's not everybody free flowing through the building for multiple hours. That to me, I'm not saying we need, I'm totally okay with cutting it. I just hope we don't, making it in line with the other elementary schools makes sense to me unless there's a reason and they can come to us in a subsequent year and say, this is why we think we need more.
Go ahead, Naomi.
I found my notes from the meeting when we met with him. One of the questions I asked was how many events will need police details? And the answer was five events. I only wrote down three of them. And it was the meet and, I wrote meet and greet, open house, and concerts. So I don't know if that provides any more background information.
Then I think we're back to concerts or everybody's in and sitting down versus we need the police detail for the open houses, meet and greets kinds of things.
Yeah, and they have the fall festival, and then they have the the arts festival. And the arts festivals where everybody's scattered around the building also.
That one I could definitely see needing somebody for.
And that's why I think we could go to 1,000, raise it from the what the other elementaries are at, but lower it from the 4503.
Yeah, that that was the number I was thinking about was the 1,000. Do you want to?
All right, then I'll make a motion that online item 100273018859118, police detail for J-Muse be reduced from 4503 to 1,000.
I'll second. Discussion? All those in favor? I passes 500.
Just a follow up. I would hope that we can have a follow up with the administration because, again, going back to Ken's point, I was a public school administrator. I had many, many events at the high school, and we never had a police officer just to be at an event. The police station is right across the street, so I hope we can have a follow up on assessment of this need.
We will do that.
And then the hall pass technology, which is line item 1001128288610-21, which is, I believe, the amount, it was a one-time charge of $500 and $33 per student. Budgeting for 500 students increases the request by 2,165. So I would present a motion to cut that cost out of the budget as it stands right now.
And I'll second it.
And open it up for discussion.
What is the actual cost of that program?
It is 2,165.
Okay.
Yeah. Setup pay.
So a total of $2,600?
No, 2165.
Oh, 2165.
2165.
I think I might be the lone person that thinks this is a good idea.
I think it's a good idea.
I think it's a good idea, and I think 2165 affects it, that bottom line, it doesn't affect the bottom line to to a degree that I find it to be worth cutting. I think it's something, we all find it valuable. I don't see why we don't give it a try this year, and if it it does cause problems with teachers or whatever. But the data that it could provide us at the middle school for learning, learning loss, I think is valuable, and I think that bottom line, after having cut as much as we have, it's it's such a small amount of money in the relationship to the budget, I am not in favor of cutting it.
Well, this is, if you allow me to just kind of interject a little bit. This is a line item that we're going on a free trial period. We haven't concluded that, so we don't have any recommendations one way or another. So you could leave the money in there in case it's successful, then they'd have the budget for it, or if it's successful, wait another year to may perhaps have the high school study it also and then bundle those two buildings together. Because if you're going to use something such as this, it's probably not going to be at your elementary schools, right? It's going to be at high school, middle school, and I know high school was kind of interested in this too. So you could indeed separate it out, let the high school do a pilot, and then have them come back the following year.
When does the free trial end?
I don't know specifically. Yep.
So you're saying this would be a, I guess I didn't understand that part. There's a free trial piece to this?
Yes, correct.
We are in it.
We're in the free trial era.
And then it's $33, it's $500 and $33 a person. So again, I'm going to.
No, it's $3.33.
Three dollars.
The total cost is 2,165.
Okay. So again, here's, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be voting against it, and I'm gonna say why again. As a classroom teacher, a classroom teacher is there to engage students. And when you have a student that's going to ask to use a pass and the classroom teacher has to stop what they're doing to be able to electronically go on and sign the pass out versus having the student pick up a pass and go to where they need to go. So we say we want data. So again, you can get data from your top 10 students that are failing classes. You can get it through an email. You know, these are the top 10 students that are failing five classes right now. Are they going to the bathroom every single period? Is that what we're looking for? Because you have that in your in your F-list, you have that in your attendance. And so what are we going to do with that data? We already know those students exist. We already know they're not engaged. And now we're taking the teacher's engagement for the 28 students in the class to stop what they're teaching, be able to do that electronic pass. So I'm completely against the electronic pass.
Here's what I'll say. I think if the teachers try it and they actually have to stop teaching, they will hate it and we won't have to pay and we won't adopt it because no teacher wants to stop what they're doing 15 times to let kids go to the bathroom. I'm just in favor of letting the teachers make this decision.
Yeah, and I do, like, the one thing that I always come back to with this particular item is just that having that concrete information, I think, is beneficial. And especially because you have sometimes discussions with students and parents and, you know, so and so was out of class for a long time, and well, student says, no, he wasn't, or no, she wasn't. And so you have that information. So I totally get that. I also feel like that can be done on paper, too. I, you know, having written many a pass in my day, we have a log, students sign out, they write down the time that they're out, you can actually control whether or not that student leaves the room or not. So while I I think it's nice to have data, like concrete data, I don't necessarily feel like that's a hard thing to achieve, you know, pencil and paper. And hall passes are a disruption no matter what, whether it's electronic or paper. So I, you know, I'm going to vote in to not, I'm going to vote that one down just because I think there's good information. I just, if we're looking at our goals and bringing that number down, I just feel like that's something that can wait. That's all. That's where I stand.
And I want to, I want to see the data from the free pass before voting to to fund something openly.
And if it comes back and they're like overwhelmingly, oh, my God, this is the best thing ever, we need it. We can always decide to move funds or find the money some other way. So this isn't like, this isn't like, no, you can't do it ever, especially if they come back and they're like, oh, my God, this free trial was amazing. We can still, we can still change our minds on this. But right now, I tend to agree with Lori that we're still piloting it, so.
Yeah, and that's, that number is very doable with like reserve funds. We could always set that aside, and if we like it, we'll definitely do it.
And for that reason, I shall vote with you all.
All right, so I'll call it to a vote. All those in favor of removing the e-Hall Pass program from, or, I don't know, how do you phrase that, the e-Hall Pass proposal for next year's budget?
I think you just proposed to reduce that line by 2165.
There you go. Let's reduce line 10, the motion is to reduce the line 100-1128-28-8610-21 by 2,165. All those in favor? Oh, sorry.
You have to leave a dollar there because if you ever want to put it, if you ever want to put it back in. So you want to put it.
There's a bunch of other stuff in that account.
Stuff in there. It's just that that line just doesn't have.
Yeah, we're not eliminating the line.
I just wanted to make sure. Okay.
Good point.
Good, yeah, good point, though. So eliminating $2,165 from that line. All those in favor? I, all those opposed? Abstain? Passes 500. All right, any further discussion before we call the?
The big question? I wanted to say one more thing because about our goals. Lori had mentioned that our primary goals in terms of budget this year were the Mesa contract and providing adequate workspace for our administration. And I wanted to highlight to the community that those are not our only goals this year. We we talk all the time about this goal-setting meeting that we do in June. Every year, we've done it, well, we've done it last year and we've done it this year. And the people in that room are everyone who's at this table here and including some other members of administration. So it's not just us dictating what we want the school district to do, and it's not just administration dictating what the school district should do. It's a real collaboration of all of the people involved. And we landed on five larger goals this year, and I'm just, I'm not going to read the whole thing. I'm just going to read the really, really quick synopses. Create an engaged, inclusive, and collaborative district culture built on mutual trust and respect. Pathways to graduation at the high school. Improve our learning outcomes by ensuring our instruction is responsive to the varied needs of our student population. Have facilities and equipment that are safe, secure, clean, healthy, current, and appropriate for meeting the educational needs of students and staff. And create a dynamic relationship between the school district and community through clear and consistent communication. And though right now we're going through a really difficult process of balancing what are our needs versus what are the community's needs, and these are really hard decisions, these five goals are always what our focus is on. And our focus is on doing the right thing for the staff, and our focus is on doing the right things for the students, and the focus is on doing the right things for the community. And it's a balancing act, and it's hard, and that's what we're trying to do tonight.
Thanks, Naomi. All right, so the question is, do I have a motion to accept the budget as presented with the reductions listed in front of you?
So moved.
Do we have a second? Second. All those in favor? Passes 500.
Thank you.
And we thank you very much for this work. It's, it's not an easy job to sit and look at where we can cut costs. But I thank you. Thank you very much.
If I can just summarize for one second, when we came into this meeting, we had a budget that was 3.92% over this year's. We now have a budget that is 2.8% over this year's budget. So I think that's a real good, good point, place to be at, to be honest with you.
And it's below inflation.
It's below inflation and a year where insurance rates have skyrocketed up 15%.
And thank you for your thoughtful comments. I will say, we have the benefit, and you've heard me say this before, of having, I think, the finest central office staff between Amy, Matt, and Melissa to work with. We worked very well, and we took a long and hard look at the entire, the entire budget, entire system. And it's an absolute pleasure being able to work with such great professionals and work with you.
All right, we will move on to new business, any new business. Go ahead, Naomi.
Hang on, I'm bringing up my notes. In my role as budget committee liaison, the budget committee has asked a couple of questions of the school board, and I want to get some answers for them before their meeting tomorrow night. And I'm finding my notes on that topic. So the first question was with respect to the unified arts schedules at the lower elementary schools specifically. Do you have the actual question up? Because I have what I was going to say in response to it on my phone. I don't have that. So the question was, it appears that unified arts are not being offered uniformly at the elementary level, but rather in a pattern that does not necessarily provide all grades with equivalent access. What are the school board's priorities and perspectives regarding the provision of consistent unified arts access at the elementary schools? Does the current staffing request in the draft budget reflect those priorities? If not, in what way? And so what I would like to propose, we say to the budget committee is that our our priority around unified arts access is that it should be equitable across schools, meaning that all three elementary schools offer equitable programs so that first graders all get something similar to one another, second graders all get similar, something similar to one another. And that it should be in line with any state standards and requirements. And that the planning and implementation of united arts schedules, unified arts schedules is the responsibility of administration. Does anyone have any?
Correct.
Further suggestions on that? Are we good?
Correct.
Okay. The second question was about the gifted and talented program, and I don't have a have a canned answer for this one, so if somebody wants to speak up. What is the board's perspective and policy practice regarding the provision of sports supports for students who are identified as gifted or talented? Do current funding requests accurately reflect those priorities? If not, in what way?
So I was going to say, I think we answered that when we were talking about how we're differentiating all kinds of programs to meet all the needs of all students. And we're looking forward to the pathways of graduation to really take a leadership role and extended learning opportunities. So and and also, what Jenna said earlier, the dual enrollment also.
Any different thoughts for when it comes to elementary school? I know that, I know that you had mentioned making sure that teachers are consistently differentiating instruction. I mean, that's the name of the game for any elementary school's teacher because that's what they do. But I'm assuming that this is particular to, I'm not sure exactly what they're referencing. So I don't know exactly what they want an answer on. And I don't remember.
Well, I would say that, again, the format and delivery of gifted and talented instruction is determined by building and central office administration. We have tonight, in particular, said that we will continue to fund that at the elementary level, but are choosing to restructure the way we ensure that every student gifted and talented receive a challenge at the middle school and high school.
Yes, and that, again, when we're talking about the elementary schools, whatever's offered should be equitable between each building, across each building, yeah.
And I would just say that the students that qualify for gifted and talented, we've really, we've reoriented the eligibility process. We've talked a lot about that last year when we bought the CoGet. Each student that qualifies receives 90 minutes per week with a gifted and talented teacher in grades three through six. And then we have whatever time is left in those teachers' schedule, they are able to provide enrichment groups in third, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade. We don't, and then as you move into the middle and high school, we've already well-covered that. But that is equitable across all the lower elementaries and and J-Muse. Thank you.
Is that what, that was it for? All right. Any other new business? Moving on to policies, annual review of investment policy, policy DFA. And this is an annual, yeah, an annual review. Do we typically read through it or just just waive the first reading? All right, do we have a motion to waive the first reading for public review?
So moved.
So moved. Do you have a second? Second. Discussion?
I think, does Matt usually like gives a little synopsis of what this is about, doesn't he?
Do I really? I have to look at it. Just second.
It does have the word investment, so I assume.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it essentially, it's, you don't want us investing in instruments that are risky. So it says, you know, everything has to be safety of principle, it has to be conservative, it has to be, you know, liquidity has to remain sufficient to meet all our goals and needs, and the yield has to be appropriate with with the market. We're not doing, no one's doing Bitcoin here. This is low-risk investments. Basically, it's bank deposits that go out in the evening when there's no cash needed because no one's drawing our account down. And then it comes back during the day. So it's, it's, it's something that's really, really kind of very standard and very, very cautious. We get probably around maybe close to $100,000 in in interest. We get probably around maybe close to a hundred thousand dollars in, in interest. I think the town, because they apportion out our allotment per month. When you collect all the, your tax revenue and everything like that, and then you apportion it out to us, they have the ability, because they have much more cash on hand to collect a lot more interest than we do. So that's the kind of difference in the two, two entities right there. So this is under the control of the treasurer and the school board per my audit standards. It has to be reviewed, you know, once a year. So that's why it's before you. All you have to do is vote to accept the review and it's, it's done.
It's Matt. All right. To all those in favor of waiving the first reading of the annual review for investment policy, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five zero zero.
And because there's no changes on it, we can just vote to accept the review in our next meeting.
There you go. All right. Moving on to other committee reports. Do we have any?
I went to a budget committee meeting last week, right after the school board meeting. They finished up their department reviews and tomorrow will be the meeting where they do what we just did and go over everything. They um they presented a, a different way of thinking about the budget this year, where they're kind of trying to figure out what's a reasonable number for like a total budget for a school board. And they're going to have like laptops and a presentation up on a screen with numbers. So it'll be something to watch.
Thanks Naomi. Any other committee reports? Go ahead Lori.
I also went to the budget committee meeting and um so you know, going back to the numbers thing, one of the one of the questions that they had was, this is the average amount that a pupil in New Hampshire cost a district. So we had a discussion that said, you know, that number is, it's, it's a variable number because if you look at like dairy field schools, that number is extremely high per, per cost. So that when you start measuring that you understand that that number is just a number based on a lot of different factors. And then the other thing that we are going to do is we're going to go back to the budget committee with the presentation on the central office, going through the PowerPoint presentation and then also the visuals of the, where we actually show the central office, the two buildings and what they actually look like inside. So that will be on the 13th. If anyone in the public would like to see that too, it's going to be a, you know, a wide opening, you know, show.
Thanks Lori. Any other committee reports? Correspondence. Go ahead Jenna.
I had some correspondence today with a constituent concerned about the French teacher because situation.
Yep. I also had some, I have not responded. I will when I get home. I wanted to have the meeting first. But I will get back to the folks that did reach out about the foreign language program. Any additional correspondence?
Lots of correspondence over the SAU building and budget questions.
Comments from the board? Go ahead Lori, go ahead and then Jenna.
I just really want our public to know how much trust and how much we value our central office and administration. And when we talk about working together, it's not always easy. And this, the last two weeks have been really hard for all of us and the professional level that they respond to us and how they maintain their composure and how they always come back with all the information that we ask for. I know that all of us are greatly appreciate, appreciate the work that they do. So thank you.
I was just going to say that, so our meeting is sort of wrapping up our budget responsibilities tonight. I mean, you know, the, the budget, the actual budget. And then passing it off to the budget committee for their very last meeting tomorrow is kind of a tight timeline. Obviously we have a snow day and we had a police issue day. So my suggestion is that next year we do what the budget committee did, which is build in snow days. So for each meeting, they had a listed snow day. I don't, I guess we didn't do that.
Well, I think we did, but I think they happened after those snow days, right? Yeah. Like our snow days were earlier in the month and then our meetings at the end of the month were the ones that were affected.
Maybe we should just pick a couple extra days and keep them on the block just so that we don't end up, I just feel like we're pressing right up against their deadline. And I don't know that they, they, I don't know. It's a lot for them.
I'm, I'm glad you mentioned that. Actually, I meant to mention it too. Like just every single, every single meeting have like a snow day and that way everybody knows ahead of time and we're not in this position again.
Yeah.
And that helps with booking rooms because that was also another issue. We wanted to have another meeting. We couldn't find a place in town to have it. So putting those on the calendar will allow that space availability.
Uh, and I, I will just personally follow up on, on what Lori was saying. I know that this last, this last month feels like we meet all just constantly meeting. It, it was tough. This was a tough budget schedule and a tough series of conversations. It was definitely something that was on my mind a lot. And I really do appreciate folks reaching out with their thoughts and their concerns. And I, I'm, I'm proud of what we were able to accomplish. I think what we're putting forward does nothing but helps our district in a number of ways. And like Lori said, I, I can't say enough positive things about our staff who every time we ask them for information, they were right there with it. I was getting emails from this guy while he had COVID last week. So like, that's how invested they are in this town and, and wanting to, to really see things move forward. So I thank you and I thank all my fellow board members for the great discussion. It's, it's been a really tough couple of weeks, but I think it's been a really productive couple of weeks and looking forward to what the budget committee has in store for us. I'll be there tomorrow. I'll see you tomorrow Chuck. See you there. Moving on to public comments on agenda items. We have a public tonight. So if you wish to speak on any of the agenda items that were discussed tonight, you're welcome to come to the microphone. We just asked that you state your name and address for the record. And if you're a student, no need to state your address, just your name. So the microphone isn't yours. It's open.
Hello, my name's Tim Boliar. I live in Three Wildcat Falls here Merrimack. So I'm the founder of New Hampshire Putin Fest. It's currently the largest putin event in the United States. If you don't know what putin is, it's a Francophone food from Quebec. So you probably know what I'm here to talk about. So I came up with the idea of a putin fest right here in Merrimack in 2015. And we moved it down here in 2019. It's a Budweiser. Putin helps keep that Bud line running. We bring quite a bit of money to Budweiser. We bring thousands of people into Merrimack that would buy gas, buy food, stay in our hotels, things like that. So one thing I really enjoyed about Merrimack, I just want to mention, I have a kid at J Mews in fifth grade. I have a da, a da, a son there and a daughter at Thornton's Ferry. One thing that really intrigues me about Merrimack, I grew up in Nashua, is that introduction to French that is offered at J Mews. Now I know there was restructuring in the program. So what I heard today was maybe what's happening now, but maybe wasn't always happening. I lived in Merrimack since 2013. It's been really cool to see those kids get the taste of the French language, which my kids are apparently going to miss. I know there's been difficulty at the middle school getting a teacher too. Please reach out. The American Association of French Language Teachers can help you. The Franco American Center in Manchester could help you. The government of France, the government of Quebec. I know that French is not your priority. Believe me, I understand. French is a heritage language in New Hampshire. 25% of New Hampshire population claim French heritage. You may have memes and pepe's and might be hiding behind Anglo names. I don't know. The biggest trading party with New Hampshire is Canada. We do $1.7 billion in trade with Canada. The province that touches Quebec. One of the things that differentiates New Hampshire from other regions is that we do have a Francophone population still, though declining. A lot of that is our own fault where we haven't really reinvested in New Hampshire's resources, particularly the French language. And you know, what I'm hearing tonight is we're picking winners and losers and it's not a battle between the two languages. They're both very valuable. But what I'm hearing is we want to help our, our administration staff, which I agree with. I think that's great. Shouldn't have mold in the buildings. We should have things up to 21st century standard. But we pick, what I feel is we picked an arbitrary number of a million bucks to get the taxpayer happy and we're cutting French. And you know, some of the other programs too, the gifted and talented program, that's another important thing. I understand we want to do that. However, what I'm going to be here in five years, when you're saying, we're going to cut French at the middle school because declining numbers. We're setting it up for failure. And now you're re handicapping again by eliminating Mademoiselle Dunn's position. And she's been great. I've been able to get students to put in fest. I've tried to get into the high school more to get students. I had in 2022, I had students initially, I couldn't get into the school district. But would love to do it. You have the biggest Francophone event for Putin in the country here. And I'm here saying, please don't cut my language because who's going to take over put in fest? Our Franco American Center can see that relationship we have with Quebec. So I just wanted to make you aware of that impact that you're going to have in future generations. Hey, Spanish is a growing language, but there's 320 million Francophones speakers in the world. 60% of those are in Africa and we have Haitian immigrants coming to Manchester all the time, looking for services, looking for people who, to speak French. If we don't seed it now, New Hampshire's completely Anglo, we're not going to have the ability to take in those immigrants and speak to them. We're not going to have French teachers in 20 years. We're just not, we're not seeding that enough. And if we want to offer a well-rounded education to the, to the students that includes world language, we need to offer something more than one. It's going to be Spanish soon. And then eventually we're going to cut Spanish because we're always going to have to make these tough decisions, whether it's a building today or figuring out how to get J Mews have an HVAC where it's not 900 degrees upstairs in a year. You know what I mean? So I just want to make you very aware of that impact. And I do hope if we do cut the position, that we try to help find her a new position somewhere else. Maybe get her to contact the folks because it's a struggle to get French teachers. You know, at the middle school, we had the V lax year. I think we have a Spanish teacher doing half, half, half French, half Spanish. They're out there guys. We just got to go try to find them. And again, I just wanted to reiterate, I know it's not your priority, but it is important to the state of New Hampshire. Because that $1.7 billion in trade will only go up if we have more French, French speakers. As we become more unilingual, I took Spanish in high school, uno, dos, tres. That's all I remember. Same with like the taste of it, right? You had said, oh, they come home, they didn't know anything. Well, yeah, it's a taste of it. But some of those kids from Merrimack might go on to UNH or Plymouth or wherever and become our next French teachers. And eliminating that taste of it from their parents biasing, oh, you don't need French. Oh, what are you going to do? Okay, crap or something, you know? That's a little bias. So we're kind of letting that come into a little bit. Oh, you're going to use Spanish more. No, you're not. They're all the same in New Hampshire. So let's leave some equal opportunity. And again, it's not a slight on any language or anyone's position, but Merrimack did a great job having this program. They don't offer that in other towns. And taking that away and saying, well, you know, they only get 39.5 minutes. Well, we did restructure that. My kid would have gotten two rounds through French, but that got restructured. They used to do they have a French club after school. They all made shirts like 10 or 15 of their kids having a great time. That used to be during the day, like enrichment periods, that was cut and moved back. So I don't know if there's, you know, this is an area where we can see we can make some changes. I just don't know if we want to go there right now. I, and I get it. You, you have these decisions. We need this building. It is kind of weird. We have three old houses, but it just stinks that it's at, you know, the kids. We're basically taking something away. We're taking benefits away from the kids to keep our staff safe. Now, I, I don't know. That's, that's a really difficult one. It does get me, you know, it pulls the heartstrings at both. But I don't know why we can't chew gum and walk at the same time in Merrimack. Well, we have to have, let's cut 1 million. Why isn't it 998,000 or whatever the heck to get us close? I don't know. But I just wanted to make you aware of the impact and that, you know, the putin fest is here, like for the time being. I like having it here in this town. But it does irk me that I'm going to have to go back to my sponsors at the governments that do trade with New Hampshire and say, if this comes out, hell, they cut my kids program. I've talked about them before. I just don't like having those conversations and I don't think it's good for the kids. You know, so in any case, that's kind of my two cents on it. As you could tell them, I'll suit it up to tell you about it, but I just really hope you consider that in your decision. You have a really talented teacher, like she does a really great job. I just want you to know that and I just hope you help her if you do decide to move forward with making this change. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Jeannie Wagner for Cowan Road. I wanted to speak to the superintendent's building. I have been in both buildings multiple times. But increasingly it's come to my notice that the school where I work at, J Mews, the windows are rusting out. It is not a safe environment for kids. Upstairs, it gets in the high eighties, low nineties regularly on warm days. That does not promote a good learning, safe environment either. So my, I don't know, I've just been thinking about why a superintendent's office for adults trumps the safety and health and learning environment of students. Thank you.
Yeah. In the, in the, if you may, if I may.
Go ahead Matt.
In, in the operating budget, we do have around $200,000 if you recall in the maintenance budget to address those windows at J Mews specifically. Can't speak to the, the, the climate control. There is no air conditioning in the building. If there is, it's in certain spots, but that, that's an issue in a lot of, all of our schools, except for the middle school, which we had a chance to build from scratch 20 years ago, which is centralized air conditioning. So.
So the windows are being worked out. Yeah, they'll be replaced.
They're being taken care of.
Chuck Moore for Depot Street. In response to the first speaker, I'd simply like to say to the school board, c'est bon, n'est-ce pas? Clearly, we have testimony from everybody here this evening that the school district has needs. And I, I've heard considerable discussion from the board this evening about how they think these needs should be balanced. But you don't balance needs with needs. You balance needs with wants. Truly, we have a school district that needs to move forward. And that includes number of initiatives that are contemporary and some that are visionary. But staying static is not the answer. Losing time is not the answer. If losing time were the answer, this proposal would be $5 million cheaper because that's what was proposed 15 years ago. So things don't get cheaper with time. They don't get less desired by time. You have to represent a contemporary community that is thriving, healthy, financially capable and build, build those things that are necessary for our children to compete, for our employees to prosper. And we must move away from the past where we never thought we could afford anything. We can. This community is not going to die on the vine. It's situated such that we will prosper in spite of ourselves. While I'm not advocating anybody be less than persiminous, I'm telling you that there is plenty of persimony in what we need and should be in our budget. We need to advocate to move forward. C'est bon.
Any further public comment?
Hi, Evelyn Abellera, 11 Bowers Landing. As you can hear, I have an accent. My main language is Spanish. My kids are bilingual, Spanish, English. And I cannot tell you how proud they are that they were learning a third language in their school, which will be French. They have nothing better to say about the French teacher that they, she was able to put the love of French in their hearts. My oldest is in high school and she keeps saying that she always expected to only speak two different languages, Spanish and English. But now she's so into French that she's really upset that this is happening because she says, all of my friends that wanted to learn French, they're not going to have the opportunity to get the love of trying to learn French because it's been taken away from them. My seventh grader enjoy learning French. I work in this district and I love hearing the kids in the morning saying, bonjour, Señora Abellera. It's cute, adorable, and they love it. They love it. I love it. And I ask Mademoiselle Dunn, how do you say this in French? At least 25 times a day. Because I want to be part of that too. I want to teach and show kids that learning three, four, five different languages, it's a, it's a good thing. And it's a really good And it's a really good thing for the future, especially when you're applying to a nice, big college or trying to get a good job. The more languages you speak, the better you're going to do in life. And we're cutting that away from the kids. We're just giving them one option, when we can give them two. We can give them three, four. But you have to remember that fifth and sixth grade is the time where they start loving things. They start loving music. They start loving the instruments, and they start loving language. That's the time where they realize, this is what I want to learn. This is what I want to do. And unfortunately, we're taking that away from the children. They're not going to have the opportunity to say, I want to learn French. By the time they get to the middle school, they're not going to care. It's too late. Thank you.
Ophelia El Faki, uh, uh, 442 South Pabusek Lake Road. Um, also, I would back up on Evelyn on what she was saying. We want to remain competitive in this world. Um, so I've taught internationally as well, and, um, usually there are most, uh, in most other countries, they speak two to three languages. So we want to keep our kids on the competitive edge, especially in this world where we have so many, um, different languages and cultures coming together. So to take away an opportunity like this, uh, I think i- is really hurting ourselves and the district as well. Again, we want to be up there with everybody else and just as competitive. And Dani Dunn does amazing work where she is. My stu- my kids as well, my personal children, have also gone through her program. She's been there all the way through since she's kindergarten up to 12th grade, et cetera. All of them have gone through her, so she is a treasure in our community, and please consider that. Thank you.
Any other additional public comment? Okay. Then we will close public comment, uh, for tonight. Um, thank you so much for your feedback and your, and your words. Um, they do matter. We do listen. Um, thank you very much for, uh, for speaking your mind. Um, and that brings us to the end. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Do we have a second? Second, all those in favor? Aye, passes five, zero, zero. We will see everybody in two weeks. Thank you very much.